We're going to call the Anderson County Board of Commission Meeting to order for June 15th, 2020. We have nine commissioners here with us and nine, I believe, on virtual. Appreciate everybody joining. We'll try to go very slow so we're not too fast. We're going to go ahead and get started with the roll call. I guess I need to check in too. Everyone that's virtual, please check in on your iPad. Leave it charged if you can, plugged in so it doesn't die during the meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to update and the voting passed. I think everybody most has. The one we're waiting on is Smallridge and Meredith. Meredith's going to join later or is he already in?
Now, Meredith is going to join later.
Commissioner Smallridge, if you could just flick in on presence with your iPad. Bob, we're not. There you go. Bob's in. Okay.
I'm ahead.
Okay, so we have 15 present, one absent. I think Commissioner Meredith will be joining us later. Next, we'll go with our prayer, which will be led by our Anderson County Clerk, Mr. Jeff Cole. Jeff, do you mind, sir?
That's right. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to be back this time today. And business, Lord, we pray for wisdom for this body tonight. Lord, we pray for wisdom and healing for our nation. Lord, we just pray that you will heal us, Lord, and please will turn our eyes back to God. In Lord God, as the faith is, we will always sing the first and holy hymn.
Amen. Commissioner Mead will lead us in our place.
Please draw me in and pledge the flag and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unstrapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Commissioner Mead. All right, next, we're going to go to appearance of citizens. If there's anyone that's tuned in virtually, I don't see anyone in the crowd that has anything to hear. We have a pretty sparse crowd, but a strong crowd. If there's anybody that's virtual that has any item they'd like to discuss that's not on the agenda. Now, if there's an item on the agenda that you would like to discuss, you'll have that opportunity to speak up when that item comes up within the agenda. But if there's an item that's not on the agenda, this is your time. Please speak up, state your name, your address, and say what's on your mind. You'll have three minutes. We'll give you some time, anyone that wants to do that. I assume no one has anything to say unless they forgot to hit the mute button, so we'll go ahead and move on. Next is approval and correction of agendas. We'll start with the consent agenda. Got a motion by Commissioner Mead to approve the consent agenda as presented and a second by Commissioner Isob. Any discussion on the motion there? Not. Let's go to the board. Brian, could you clear the board? So this is to approve the consent agenda as presented. Just waiting on Commissioner Denenberg and Commissioner Smallridge. Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Let's, uh... Okay. In the meantime, see if we can connect with him because I don't want to keep having votes and him not. We've already marked him as present, so, okay, we have 14 yes, zero noes. Motion passes for the consent agenda. Next is the regular agenda. Got a motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve. Commissioner Fritz? You're on mute, Commissioner Fritz.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. I apologize. Good. And second about Commissioner Mead.
Yes.
We have some discussion. Commissioner Jaeger.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to add a grant onto the budget, I mean, onto the agenda. EJA has particular year 20 coronavirus grant under the mayor's section.
Okay, we have a motion to add the COVID grant under the mayor's report. Please help me, commissioners, stay on task. I'm making a note, but it doesn't mean I won't miss it. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it, ma'am.
Okay. We have a second to the motion to add the COVID grant to the mayor's report. Any discussion on that motion? I think we've still got to take a actual roll call vote for that, don't we?
We do for every vote.
For every vote. So let's, uh... Let's make a... I think we can go ahead. Commissioner Jaeger. I think we can go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda and then make an amendment to add it. Can we do that? Or do we need to make that change to the...
Then we just approve it after that.
Well, then we're going to have... Clear the board. Let's go. We're going to have to add this to the agenda first before we... We got to vote on the addition. Everything has to be done on the board. All right, so now we're going to go ahead and make your motion again, if you don't mind, Commissioner Jaeger. And the second...
I would like to add the Department of Justice, EJA, this is for year 20 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program grant under the mayor's section.
Okay, hit your motion button if you don't mind, and then whoever seconded it, thank you, sir. Commissioner Denenberg seconded it. Any discussion on adding that to the mayor's report? Okay, seeing none, let's go vote to add that to the agenda.
I'm always the favorite of accepting money.
True. Good point.
Operator, come in here.
If you have to, you can take his voice vote until we get rock and roll. Commissioner Smallridge, if you can, go ahead and place your vote to add COVID grant under the mayor's report. All right, he's in there. Okay, 15 yes. Motion passes unanimously, okay? Any other additions to the agenda before we vote on the regular agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Chuck Fritz mentioned in one of our meetings recently that he felt that the law director needed an assistant. I'm under that same impression, and I'd like to add that under either new business or old business for tonight. And amend the budget if necessary to allow for a salary in next year's budget for an assistant to the law director.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Creasy? So go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
I must add that to either the new business or the old business.
Okay, hang on. Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. I heard Jay Jaeger, Law Director, speak in. Go ahead, Jay. Chuck, I'll come back to you after Jay. Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Creasy. I appreciate your concern, certainly all those that support this idea. But I've met with the Budget Committee, and we're going to revisit this issue in March. We should know a lot more about what my budget looks like at that point. But if we can hold off till March of next year, we'll know exactly where we're at. But again, I do appreciate you, sir. Thank you so much for remembering us.
Thank you, Jay. I'll come back to you, Creasy, before we're done, okay, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Fritz.
I'm not through.
Ah, I didn't think you were. Commissioner Fritz, go ahead, bud.
Yeah, we discussed this in budget at the law director's request. We did agree to wait till March to revisit this. And yes, I was supposed to look at it, and so we did pass a motion to ensure that we do revisit this in March at his request.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for the feedback. I don't see anybody else, so Commissioner Creasy, go ahead, sir.
Yes, well, my personal opinion, I think the need is more urgent than that. But if it's already been discussed and voted on at the Budget Committee, I'll go along with the wishes of the Budget Committee. But I feel the issue is more urgent. There's a lot of work that's been piled onto that office, and we depend a lot on that office. And I hate to see something get held up that's important. And he's been working on high priority items, and he never lets them go that I know of. And but I'm certainly in support of giving that office more help and an assistant. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any other items to be added on the board to the regular agenda. Now, I just need a motion to approve the regular agenda with the amended motion to add the COVID grants under the mayor's report. I have a motion by Commissioner Fritz to accept that way. Is that correct, Commissioner Fritz?
That's correct.
And Commissioner Denenberg seconded. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. This is again to approve the agenda with the one amended item. Motion passes unanimously, 15-0. Next is committee reports, purchasing report by Catherine Ajmeri. Catherine?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
All right, wonderful. Under, we don't have any items under Section A, so we go to Section B, contracts pending law director approval. The first item on there, blue cross, blue shield, it was going to be amending our current contract, but Kim didn't get a copy of it in time, so she had requested that be removed. So that is not an action item. Items two through 10 are, and they have all now been approved by the law director, except item number two. That's still with the vendor, so I don't know if you all want to approve these as a group or individually.
Can you clear the board, Brian? Okay, thank you, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner McCamey. What's your motion, Mr. McCamey?
To approve as a group.
Approve as a group, items two through 10?
Yes.
For Catherine, is that okay? And I guess make it pinned in the law director's approval? Hang on, I've got something there.
I thought two was the one that didn't have law director approval yet.
Yeah, I was just asking McCamey if he wanted to make it pending the law director's approval, items group two through 10. We can do it any way you want.
Yeah, so it's what we're saying. If we're approving 10, all 10 as a group, and number two is subject to law director approval.
Items two through 10. Item one was removed by the request of the HR director.
That's right.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve items two through 10, with item two still needing approval from the law director, seconded by Commissioner Isob. Thank you, sir. Any questions on that motion? Let's go to the board and vote. Commissioner Anderson. All right, motion passes unanimously, 15-0. Go ahead, Catherine.
Under Section C, other business, the request to surplus capital assets. We have two vehicles from the sheriff and three mowers from the sheriff that they are requesting be surplus and sold on cup deals, submitting for your approval either as a group or individually.
Commissioner Smallridge, your motion, sir? Might want to unmute.
As a group, I'm sorry.
Okay, approve as a group to surplus two Ford Crown Vix and three Cub Cadet mowers, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Okay, any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's go to the board. Yes is to approve. Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Catherine.
The next item that requires action under Section C is the topic of the RFP for coal ash testing. As Commissioner Denenberg, I know you all probably know about this. She has requested us to do an RFP to send to labs for testing of coal ash samples at the Bull Run steam plant, submitting for your approval.
Let me ask you a question real quick. Did we skip over update? That's just an update on the EMS candidate care contract performance. There's no action needed there?
Correct.
All right, so the item is, as you mentioned, item three, RFP for coal ash testing. Can you clear the board, Brian? Is there any motion on this item? Again, this is a recommendation that came through.
This is not the condition where anybody can make the motion.
I make the motion to move forward with the submitting for dead or proposal entities that can professionally and adequately test what we need to be tested from Bull Run.
Okay. Try it now, Commissioner Denenberg, in terms of hitting the motion. I think you have a motion. Appreciate it. Seconded by Commissioner Scott. We have a few questions. Commissioner Jameson, did you want to speak? Okay. Commissioner Mead, go ahead.
Yeah, well, one thing I'll put out is that this RFP, we're going to have to have, you know, what it is we're going to want them to read, and it's passed already enough before we make any final approval. Besides, this is a request for proposal, so we're not spending any money at this point other than a little bit of time to put this together.
Hang on, Commissioner Denenberg. I don't think Commissioner Mead was done. I'll come back to you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Based on such, I have heard there's real questions. I wonder if we're getting accurate data. And so I think having our own independent data is a prudent thing. But something as serious, as such a huge amount of hazardous waste being potentially left behind, it hasn't been properly characterized. Needs to be done. And at this point, we're not spending much money. We're going to find out what it's going to cost. And in the meantime, we have to define clearly what it is we want them to measure.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Denenberg, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, Commissioner Mead, we will define precisely what we want them to test. We don't know if it's going to require an RFP yet because according to Ms. Ajmeri, depending on the cost as to whether it can go as a proposal or if it would be required to go as an RFP. So these are all things that are being taken a strong, hard look at. And what we're looking for is approval to move forward because there's no way that we're going to rely upon anything from TVA or TDEC at this point. Thank you.
And this is Catherine again. I'd sent a draft of a high-level RFP to Commissioner Denenberg, and she was going to forward it to people who are actually experts in this field because, I mean, I barely pass chemistry, so not relying on, you know, layman's knowledge here.
Thank you.
And one other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that we will, of course, discuss this with the professionals and with our law director because I know that there were some items that he had some very important input in. Thank you.
Thank you. It's not really related to the motion, but it is TVA, so I just want to make all the commissioners aware that I was contacted by TVA to attend a informal luncheon with Commissioner Fritz. I don't know if he's had a chance to check his email. I know all the mayors have been invited. I'm not sure all of them will be attending, but this is the same informational meeting they've had in the past. So I obviously will be asking about the possibility for us to test this coal ash, and then I'll report back what information they share with us. So I'm looking forward to the meeting. That is going to be on Wednesday the 17th, 11:30 to 1:00. And so I'll keep you abreast of what comes of that meeting and anything. And I certainly hope fellow Commissioner Fritz is able to join me, and we can find out what the intentions are for TVA and Bull Run as they move forward and get a better understanding. And again, we'll be reporting back to everyone on that. So any other discussion on the motion to proceed with the coal ash? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Creasy. Sorry.
Yeah, and the meeting with TVA you're speaking of, did you say that Commissioner Denenberg was also invited?
I didn't see that. I'm sure she can come. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I'd like to see her attend if she's able. Yeah, I'd like to see that. And I feel, I think the other commissioners would also like to see her involved.
Yeah, well, and I do appreciate TVA asking the commissioners in District One to show up. And I certainly would like, I certainly would like to get an understanding between me and Commissioner Fritz of what TVA's intentions are and certainly can have Commissioner Denenberg join. But I don't think this is a meeting to try to resolve any issues or agree to anything. I want to hear what they have to say from an informational standpoint. I did see an email come out just a little while ago. Maybe some of the commissioners have read it from TVA to address the emails and the newsprint. And I don't know at all what it says. And it seems that it relates to Kingston. So anyway, we got good dialogue going, and I think we have a good motion on the floor, and we'll see where it goes. Commissioner Fritz, yes, sir?
Yes, I've been in touch with TVA also today, and I'll get to the meeting on Wednesday.
Great. I look forward to seeing you there. Commissioner Denenberg, if you'd like...
Yes, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Creasy for his kind words, but I can tell you that I have not received an invitation, and I don't really think that I will.
Well, I'd be happy to bring you in. If you'd like, you can. I'll escort you in if you'd like. No problem.
We're not going to play that game. No, that's quite all right. I certainly appreciate the fact that you and Commissioner Fritz were invited, and I would certainly, you know, be very interested in hearing your thoughts and comments afterwards. But I have...
I think, I think, I think the mayor, Oak Ridge, has a conflict, so maybe you can go in his place.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm very serio-, I'm very serious about my comment there. I feel that Mrs. Denenberg is heading up the Intergovernmental Committee, and she definitely, if there's, TVA has something to say to commission and to District One commissioners. I feel that she should also be able to hear that in person, but I'm going to leave it up to her. But I strongly feel that she ought to be there. Thank you.
Good to meet you. Any other discussion? Again, this is on a motion to approve proceeding with testing of Bull Run coal ash and getting an RFP out there. Any other discussion on that motion? Let's go to the board.
Yeah, TVA is going to invite me. I love it.
Please don't forget to mute yourself.
Sorry about that.
Motion passes 15 to 0. Okay, Catherine, what's next?
On that note, that is all that we have on purchasing committee agenda.
Catherine, thank you. I'm not sure we've ever had a meeting here where you're able to be done by 7:00 PM, so congratulations. Enjoy the family.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Okay, what do we have next here? We'll back up. Commissioner Scott's not keeping me on top of things. Of course, I haven't asked her what page we're on, so now we are back at the budget report. Robbie Holbrook, Robbie has some budget amendments we probably should have added before. But if the commission doesn't have a problem, I'd like to probably give him that opportunity now to add it to the agenda. It was my mistake. He asked me to do it. I just overlooked it. So he has some budget amendments under Group Eight. We probably technically don't have to do it, but I think out of abundance of caution, we should have added to the agenda if the commission would bring that up. Is this a motion, Commissioner Isob, to do so? Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Yes.
A budget report, would that include...
Well, it may, but I just...
At all a favor, I'll second adding it in.
Yes. Go ahead, Robbie. Sorry.
There's also corrections to 47 and 50 that Tyler Mays is requesting since the Budget Committee has met, so that's all.
We'll add that to the motion, or we'll, let's pass this motion, and we'll have another motion to make those corrections. Okay, so right now, we have a motion on the floor to add the budget amendments under Group Eight under Finance Director's report. And from the discussion on... Let's go to the board. Again, this is to add the budget items under Group Eight, budget amendments. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, we're on page six.
Six? Is that what you said? Thank you. It's hard for me to go back and forth from there. Okay, motion passes unanimous, 15-0. Do we have another motion to make those corrections for that was requested?
Item number 47 and 50.
Item 47 and 50 that was by Tyler Mays, the Sheriff's Department. Motion by Commissioner McCamey to do so, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, let's go to the board to add those items. Vote yes. Motion passes 15-0 unanimous. Okay, thank you all for adding those items. Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Wondell. This is the month of June, so we're trying to get everything we can in before it's too late, so I appreciate you all adding that to the agenda. Brian, can you make me presenter for a second?
One moment. We'll lose the roll call and request a safety briefing while I'm here and presenter. So commissioners, if you have any questions, try to keep it in your mind and feel free to jump in verbally if you have a question for Robbie. If you have a motion or something later, we can come back to it. Okay, Robbie.
Okay, Robbie, we should have your name.
You there, Robbie?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I was on mute. Do you see the cash and fund balance report in front of you there?
Yes, and that is page nine on your iPad for those commissioners all along and on your iPad. Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, restricted funds are nine hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. Committed funds, two million, fifty-seven thousand, three ninety-two. Assigned is five hundred and nineteen thousand, eight fifty-seven. Unassigned fund balance is four point four million, which is just under the fund balance limit of four point five million. So we do need three, two-thirds vote for budget amendments tonight. Our total fund balance is seven point nine million, and cash is twelve point one million, which was just under, a little bit less than last year's cash at twelve point four million. So any questions on the fund balance report?
I've got one, Robbie, just
Yes, sir.
I ask this question probably every year, and I'm, but under the 101 General Fund.
Yes, sir.
It shows us for the twelve million dollar cash balance. And you've got it broken down under unassigned fund balance, assigned funds, committed funds, restricted funds.
Yes.
Under committed funds, what, what does that mean?
Well, committed funds are, have less of a restriction as the restricted funds. Restricted is the most restricted, committed, and then assigned. It's more or less like we, in commission, we've restricted money for the purpose of like something. And it's, it's not like a code, a Tennessee anticoat or anything like that. It comes out of revenue, but we restricted money to commit to like the senior center. And so that would be a committed fund. But, you know, you can lift that restriction also by a commission vote.
That's what I'm wondering, and I'm not debating you here. I'm just, something I'm just thinking out loud as I was looking at it today. The committed funds of two million, fifty-seven thousand. It seems to me if it's committed, it would be budgeted. So, you know, it shows us committed, kind of encumbered on the cash balance. And I, maybe I'm just not, maybe I could get Commissioner Jaeger to help me understand the funds better. But I, it just seems to me if we're going to have committed funds, it seems like it would just simply come off the fund balance, period, and be allocated to those funds that they're assigned to. I don't understand why it would set in the 101 General Fund. Because to me, why wouldn't we just let it set in the cash 101 Fund and just let it sit there if it's, you know? Give me, give me that item that's committed in the two million dollars.
I would have to pull a balance sheet, and I don't have one in front of me. I apologize. Like I said, the senior center, their revenue that we collect, I think for donations, we commit those funds to that center. So if we set it in cash and just left it there and didn't commit it, it could be easily spent, I think. Or the less of a opportunity to, you know, commit, if you commit those funds, there's less opportunity to spend those or for you guys to want to commit those somewhere else.
And I apologize. I should ask these questions. And so in essence, we generally, we actually have twelve million dollars of cash we can get our hands on. And what you're showing here under unassigned fund balance of four point four million is what you're saying that we can spend without being a problem to the restricted or committed funds that have already been kind of so-called earmarked. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right. Sounds good. Any other questions on the cash and fund balance report for Mr. Holbrook? Do you need a motion to accept this? It's just information.
Just information. Moving down to the sales tax report next, that is right here. And April was April was another good month for sales tax collections at three point two nine, three million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, three forty-seven, which was up twelve percent from last April. The Anderson County, our collections were at three sixty-one, seven twenty, which was up from last April also. So we're still showing great sales tax collections. And actually, the mayor and her mayor, they have some kind of report she gets for sales tax. And she's already seen Mays, and it is again up. So we're not seeing some of the trends that some of the other counties are seeing. And I think that's all due to internet sales collections.
Any questions for Robbie on that? Robbie, back to that cash fund balance real quickly. On that general fund cash trends at the bottom that you show, which I like, it shows eight nineteen was twelve point four eight seven million, and nineteen twenty is at twelve point one two. Yeah.
That's correct.
Notice your, your trending lines are starting, you know, we've been, we've been having the luxury of our trending lines going up, up, up. But this one's kind of taking a dip. Looks like it's trending back up again. But do you have any explanation on that?
Honestly, I mean, I feel like our cash would be somewhat better if it wasn't for the COVID situation in the last two months. I mean, we're just now starting to see what effects we're having from that. But, I mean, we were trending, as you can see. It's not, what I'm showing you is not in color, but the line above is this year. And we were trending way up until, you know, January, February. And now March and April and May are showing, I think, are results of some of the COVID situation.
It looks, it looks like it's rebounding since April and May, so that's good. All right, I didn't mean to, I was just
We'll remember too, in April and earlier in January, we did let 171 borrow some money for the ESG payment. We paid that out of the, we just, we just returned that money this past month.
That was that million dollars we were talking about last month?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead. Sorry about
So next up, I have the EMS report, summary financial statement. And as I reported each month, they're continuing to do well. They've collected five point five million, ninety-five percent of their revenue for their budget. And their expenditures are at five point one, which is only eighty-five percent. So now they have a surplus, if it ended today, of three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. So Nathan's continuing to do well there.
Good job, Nathan.
All right, so Brian, you can probably get the voters board up, because we're going to go to the budget amendments. And they will have to vote on each one of these.
Nathan, I'll have to also say good job to you and your entire staff. Yeah, because I don't want to leave them out.
Okay.
Go ahead, buddy. We're good to go.
Group two appropriations are from the school department. Twenty-eight B through thirty-one, seeking approval as a group or individually.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group, sir?
Approve as a group?
Okay, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Okay. Any discussion on that? Let's go to the board. Commissioner Denenberg, there we go, thank you. Motion passes fifteen, yes, zero, no's unanimous.
Thank you. Group three is transfers from the school department. It's item number thirty-two through thirty-nine, seeking approval as a group or individually. Or anybody have any questions about any of them?
Commissioner McCamey, motion to approve as a group?
Yes.
Sir, seconded by Commissioner Fritz as a group?
Yes.
Sir, any questions on that? No discussion. Commissioner Scott, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie, thank you very much for having Dr. Parrott sign those documents.
Oh, you're welcome.
It was regarding payroll, Mr. Chairman. There was an adjustment that was made for the person that was actually filling out the paperwork. And I had requested that Dr. Parrott sign that off.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Let's go to the board. Motion passes fifteen, yes, zero, no's unanimous. That was for group three. Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, group four is appropriations non-school. It's numbers forty to forty-nine, fifty, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three. Forty-seven has a correction from ten thousand, seven thirty-five, thirty-five to twelve thousand, one oh five, thirty-five. And fifty has a correction from twenty-eight, nine seventy-six, twenty-five to thirty thousand, six twenty-six, twenty-five.
Are those changes that we talked about earlier, or are these different?
No, those are, those are the ones we talked about earlier. And I thought I saw Tyler, and he might could explain those if you needed him to. He's in the, I thought I saw him in the audience earlier.
So we've already made those changes to format in the meeting here. So you'll, you'll make the adjustments on your side, which we approve. But you did point out what those numbers are. Does anybody got any questions on it? We got a motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve the group with those changes, Commissioner Fritz?
Correct.
Thank you, and seconded by Commissioner
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Go to the board. Motion passes fifteen, yes, zero, no's unanimous. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Robbie. Next up is group five, transfers non-school. It's numbers fifty-one through sixty-eight, seeking approval as a group or individually. Or any questions on any of them?
This is group five. We have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve as a group. Thank you, and seconded by Commissioner Smallridge as a group. Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Thank you. Appreciate it, buddy. Any questions on that? That's group five, items fifty-one through sixty-eight. Any questions? Any discussion? Let's go to the board. Motion passes fifteen to zero unanimous.
Group six is appropriations from that affect the general fund, unassigned fund balance. There are two, sixteen, nine, and seventy, seeking approval as a group or individually.
A motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group.
That's correct.
And seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Is that correct, Commissioner Denenberg? Okay. Any questions on that? Thank you. Oh, by the way, Commissioner Denenberg, TVA said they would love to have you there.
They did not.
You want to see my text on my phone? Want to see text on my phone?
Yes, I do.
I don't think everybody wants to be, it's right here. Who do you trust here that you can get a vouch for? Hang on. What's this say right here, Vice Chairman?
She's more than welcome to attend.
All righty then.
That was my fault. Thank you.
They said that before I even asked, so that's good. See the power you have? Okay, any other items, discussion on this motion for group six? Two items, one for the finance, one for the mayor. Seeing none, let's go to the board and vote. Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Jameson. Thank you, Commissioner Jameson. Thank you, Scott. Motion passes fifteen to zero unanimous. What else you got, Robbie? Are you on mute, Robbie?
I was on mute. So under miscellaneous, group seven, the first section was the Toyota Tax Refund. I just presented an update on the status of the tax refund dispute. No action was taken. This was only put on the agenda because we thought we were going to have to do an appropriation from commission to set aside the money. But state statute says that we can write a check out of current taxes, tax collections, if we were to lose this lawsuit. We could also appeal to make a yearly payment, so it wasn't necessary to get an appropriation.
Okay.
All right. Section B by Brian Young was taken off the table. Under section C, county attorney, county law director Jay Jaeger presented his staffing plan for hiring replacement for retiring staff member. Law director Jaeger made a request to allow rollover of remaining salary code funds in the current fiscal year, approximately six thousand dollars, to help offset the increased salary of the new employee, and a request to revisit the issue of compensation at the March 2021 Budget Committee meeting. Motion was made by Commissioner Scott and seconded by Commissioner Denenberg for approval of both requests, and passed to refer to the Anderson County Board of Commission with a recommendation for approval of the rollover request. I need a, I need a vote on this too, please, from commission.
A motion, motion by Commissioner Scott to support that, Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir.
You're on, thank you. Commissioner Denenberg seconded.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Everybody understand the motion? All right. No questions? Go to the board and vote. Motion passes fifteen to zero unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Section D was a compensation plan update by Director of Human Resources and Risk Management, Kim Jeffrey Switaker, presented an update of the progress of work on the compensation plan and compensation pay audit. No action was taken. Section F, under new business, interim director of finance, interim finance director Robbie Hobart presented a request for pre-application approval of the Tourism Enhancement Grant on behalf of the Tourism Council and Conservation Board. Motion by Rick Meredith, seconded by Bob Smallridge, and passed to refer to county commission with a recommendation for approval. So we'll need a vote on this also.
The motion is approved. Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on this motion? Let's go to the board. Motion passes unanimously, fifteen to zero. Okay, Robbie?
Okay. And under Group Eight, additional items not discussed during Budget Committee. The first thing I have is
Did you mute yourself again?
Yes, I did. Sorry.
Sorry.
Proposed budget vote. We took, I've asked Commissioner Chairman Wondell to take that off the table tonight because of some of the cuts they're making in Nashville at the state. The school department wants to revisit their budget. And we're going to, since we weren't going to be able to pass the tax appropriation until next month, we're just going to ask if it's okay to pass the whole budget next month and give the school department another chance to present a different budget possibly.
Thank you, Robbie. Dr. Parrott just walked in. Dr. Parrott, would you like to say anything about the budget? Come on up if you don't mind. Is the microphone working? Yes, go ahead. Dr. Parrott?
Our board passed the budget last Thursday night. It's about, about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than it was. And that, part of that is from the state cutting out that two percent rate. Some of it was from where we had, had to cut our budget because of the loss of students. So we're running back about, now almost a million dollars less this year than it was last year.
Wow, okay. Okay. Commissioner McCamey has a question. Is it all right? Go ahead, Commissioner McCamey.
This is for Robbie. Do we need to pass a continuing budget resolution? Or is that automatic now under the state law?
Under the Eddie one law, it's automatic. Now, we don't have to pass a continuing resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, though.
Good question. Any other questions for Dr. Parrott while I'm standing here? Thank you, Dr. Parrott. We appreciate you. Got anything for us, anything you want to share?
Oh, just, just, we'll be working on a plan that we're going to have in July, the first of July. We've got our staff working on it. There'll be a survey going out this week to parents and to community people to ask for their input. And if we're looking at probably one or two town hall meetings sometime in July, just to get the pulse of everybody. But we'll have three plans. We'll have one coming back at Spacy Park, this place. But we'll have three plans. We'll have one coming back that, uh, uh, is facing this place. We'll have another one coming back that is a hybrid. It will be, you know, some parents may want to send their students back, and we'll have a hybrid project where they'll be online and coming back school part of the time. And then we'll have another one that's completely online if we have to shut down. And all of this works. And our plan is, we're gonna modify the, the schedule. I know we've got a lot of questions on that, and you may have got that. We're still gonna have fall break and Christmas break and Thanksgiving break, uh, and we're not going to be altering the schedule as far as the school day. Parents have to be, you gotta be consistent on that, for parents to be on that, to make sure, here's when I pick my child up and things like that. So that one, two days a week, and then all three days a week, or one Monday, Wednesday, Friday this week, Tuesday, Thursday, it just don't work in the real world. So we're gonna try to make the best plan possible. One thing I would say is, uh, we're excited about the ESG project. We just finished that up. And, uh, as you know, every one of our classrooms now have, they have an I-N-I system in it. That's, we call it the little blue box. And, uh, we've not got the official report yet because they're still working with the lawyers. But within thirty minutes in any classroom, we killed all the virus, even coronavirus, up to ninety-nine point six percent. And we have a mold test, uh, and the mold count inside the classroom is eight times less than the mold outside in regular areas. And we're excited about that. So it's the cleanest place. It's, it's as clean as hospital.
That's great.
We thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. Commissioner Isbell has a question or a comment. Commissioner Isbell?
Yeah, I just, uh, Dr. Parrott, I wanna say thank you. I believe that, you know, Melrod is one of his, haunting all of the signs and stuff. Yes, sir. But I personally say thank you, uh, to, yeah. And, and we had two graduations last Friday night. Everything was perfect. Check your pictures and things like that. We've got Anderson County just coming Friday night, hoping no rain, and coming out soon next week. And got a lot of positive, uh, comments on that. So we're gonna make sure that we do the best we can, keep everybody safe. But kids won't graduate. We won't walk across that stage. We'll make sure that.
Yes, I, I know we all appreciate that, uh, 'cause everything else is, seems like it's been ta- taken away. It's kinda ironic to have a child and, and then actually miss, you know, that part of school. And you wouldn't think they would, but they, they do, and it's been tough on them all, for sure. So appreciate you having us.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is, you know, the, uh, those, just all the, uh, people getting together and how, you know, that, that, uh, camaraderie is just meaningful. We've gotta get that back. We've, we've gotta keep this kind of going. And schooling, as, as Mr. Jackson will tell you, is the backbone of everything we do. And if we don't have schooling, it's hard to have anything else. So I appreciate you all for, if I need to do anything, please y'all have my phone number just calling.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. Anything else for Dr. Parrott before we get back into Robbie's report here? Thank you for coming, Dr. Parrott. Appreciate your comments. Okay, Robbie, go ahead. Yes, you're at your budget amendments, maybe?
Yes, um, the next item B is the new budget amendments, one through five. I can do these individually if you'd like, or?
It's a pleasure of the commission.
We request for them to do them individually, so people have a better understanding of what the amendments are.
Sure.
You got it. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Go ahead, Robbie.
The first one is a transfer from the juvenile department. It's increasing postage six hundred dollars and decreasing staff development, six hundred dollars. Just to cover necessary postage fees for the remainder of the year.
Motion by Commissioner Scott to approve, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's go to the board and to vote. Motion passes fifteen, zero, unanimous. Go ahead, Robbie.
The, um, second one I have is a transfer major line item. It's increasing clerk and master medical insurance, seventy-six hundred dollars, and decreasing, um, medical insurance and finance, thirty-eight hundred, and county attorney, thirty-eight hundred dollars, by, um, source seventy-six, just to make adjustments for year-end benefit codes.
Motion by Commissioner Scott to approve as presented, seconded by Mr. Denenberg. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes fifteen, zero, unanimous. Go ahead, Robbie.
The next one is an appropriation from the county clerk Jeff Cole. It's increasing postage, twenty thousand dollars. And he's increasing his revenue, county clerk postage, about the same amount, twenty thousand dollars, to cover unnecessary postage fees for the remainder of the year.
Motion by Commissioner Denenberg to approve as presented. Seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion on that request? Seeing none, so goes board and votes. Brian, I've got a, oh, here, I'm reconnecting. Hang on. It's reconnected. Uh, okay. Motion passes fifteen, zero, unanimous. Go ahead, Robbie.
The next one's from the business office. It's a transfer involving payroll. It's increasing contracts with vehicle owners, forty-seven thousand five hundred, and it's decreasing one forty-one, seven-two, seven-one, zero, one-eight-nine, other salaries and wages, twenty thousand four hundred, and one forty-one, seven-two, seven-one, zero, seven-oh-one, administrative equipment, twenty-seven, one hundred. It's to transfer funds to replenish budget for contracts with vehicle owners. An adjustment was requested earlier based on availability of funds, as assumed as accurate. However, as payments were made to bus owners, this assumption was incorrect, and funds were not available in the amount as originally thought. This, this amendment is to restore the balance of the funds to this object code and eliminate budget overages.
Thank you, Robbie. We got a motion. Motion by Commissioner Isbell to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board. Motion passes fifteen, zero.
All right, and the last one I have is another, um, transfer of a payroll from the business office. In assistant principal code, eight thousand fifty-six dollars, and secretary's code, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars, and decreasing one forty-one, seven-two, four-one, zero, three-oh-seven, communication, travel, other contracted services, professional development, and other charges by thirty-one thousand dollars. Just to transfer funds for salaries of assistant principal and school secretaries. Those actual costs have exceeded original budget estimates.
Thank you, Robbie. Have a motion by Commissioner Jameson to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner McCamey.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on that? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes fifteen, zero. Anything else, Robbie?
Yes, one more thing, just, I just need to note that, um, I put in each of your alls boxes a report on the debt obligation handed out commissioners. It's the form CT, the CT form oh-two-five-three that we get back from the state comptroller's office, and they just require us to, um, hand them out to the commissioners and just to note in the, uh, mission meeting that we did so. So I'm just letting you all know that.
Thank you. Any questions on that? I have one, Robbie. Uh, Commissioner Anderson has a couple of questions for you, okay? Go ahead, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Robbie, are, did you say next month? We'll have, will we be, will we have the, the new certified tax rate next month?
That's what we have been told all along, that it would be ready in July. I know that we're finishing up the appeal meetings this, this, maybe this week. I'm not sure. Johnny, I haven't spoke to Johnny in a, in a few days, but I, I thought I heard that they were finishing those meetings this week. The plan is, in the next budget meeting, we'll present the new school budget. I think they're just taking out the, like Dr. Parrott said, the raises, and, um, the, the general fund's already completed, so we'll do both appropriation resolutions the night of the next commission meeting in July. Hopefully that we can have a vote, and it will pass, and do those resolutions.
Okay, and are, are, are we doing any capital requests for departments yet? Is that gonna be next month, or?
We normally wait until after the budget's passed, and I also know that the, the mayor, with the money that the governor allotted for, um, we, we spoke about this in a couple of commission meetings, that money is gonna, is, a lot of that's gonna be going for the capital, um, assets this year.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you, Robbie. Anything else for Robbie? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. You have a good evening. Appreciate you.
Y'all did the same. Thank you.
Next is gonna be Department, uh, Public Works, Jeff Tribaka. Are you there, Jeff?
Hi, I'm, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you, everyone. Um, back when in December, we had requested to, looking at the option to take over ownership of the equipment at the convenience centers as part of our contract extension for the waste hauling and operations of the convenience centers contract. And I requested sixty days at that point to look at the equipment and make sure that it was something that we wanted to do. Um, unfortunately, with the annual report that I had due to the states and some issues with fires and convenience centers, um, it took me a little longer to look at any of that. I've met with the mayor, and we talked about it at solid, last solid waste board meeting. And looking at what the cost will likely be with the age of this equipment, I think we'd like to rescind that request and ask to not take over ownership of this equipment.
And, uh, we got a motion by Commissioner McCamey, uh, to not take over the equipment. Is that right, Commissioner McCamey?
Yes, sir.
And seconded by Commissioner Smallridge.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any questions for Jeff on this? Jeff, let me ask you a question, uh.
Yes, sir.
So, but I heard you say, I think, is you really haven't had a chance to evaluate all the equipment because you had this other report you were doing, which I understand. Is that kinda what our interpretation is?
Well, I did take a look at it. It was just much later. I was originally gonna take sixty days, which I should have reported back in February. And obviously, it's way past February. But I have a look at the equipment. Um, we have holes, and I think I listed in the, the, we've got holes in the bottom containers at the Marlow Center, the Frost Bottom Convenience Center, Green Valley, and also Wolf Valley has a leak in a couple of containers. We've got the totally decimated containers up at the, um, Aegis Creek Center from the fires that have transpired up there. I've had two major hydraulic leaks at Green Valley and East, uh, Marlow, sorry. Those are both fixed, and then I was at Marlow yesterday, and we have yet another hydraulic leak, so. I, I've looked at it, but I just don't see that with the amount of money that we'll have left that we're gonna be able to, I think it's gonna wind up maybe costing us more money than it would be to just continue as we have been.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm gonna support the motion not to buy the equipment. I guess where I'm coming from is, we have a contract with an entity to provide those services and to provide that equipment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How long does that contract go?
Uh, five-year extension. That was a.
Five years? When, when is the end of the five-year contract?
Uh, twenty twenty-five.
All right, so according to the contract, they are obligated to provide the equipment. We don't, we're not obligated to provide the equipment. We're not obligated to buy the equipment. Okay.
Right, yes.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll support this, and that's the way we should move forward. If there's any pushback, I think you should come back to solid waste and then come back to operations or the commission. And at some point, maybe we need to consider doing an RFP out to see who would take up that business and managing these convenience centers. I, I don't think we've ever done that in probably twenty years. Uh, I've been on commission sixteen years, and it's never been done. We keep, seem to do the same thing over and over, and then we always seem to have the same issues over and over, so.
Right.
When I get done here in September as chairman, I'm looking forward to joining the solid waste committee, and, uh, that's one of the items I'll be taking up myself, so I look forward to it. Uh, any other comments, questions, with anybody on this item? Okay, let's go to the board. Yes is to not accept. Oh, so go ahead. Wait a minute, we got a comment. Go ahead. Who is it?
Creasy.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Creasy.
Right, and I'm sure that Jeff knows, and you, and all commissioners are aware, Commissioner Isbell is, uh, has some expertise in those fields with that type of equipment. And, uh, and I'm sure that you probably call on him, uh, for his expertise, but let's, let's remember, we have that, uh, have an expert among us, and keep that in mind as we go, move forward with this solid waste issue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. That's true. Any other comments? Okay, yes is to not take the equipment over. No is to reconsider taking the equipment over. Let's go to the board. Yes is to not take the equipment over. Motion passes fifteen, zero. Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, that, that's all for right now. Thank you.
About District One Convenience Center, any updates on property?
Robert, have, have you heard back from the, the gas, the natural gas company that owns that property on Wolf Valley? I haven't, we haven't touched base in a week or so.
I have a tentative meeting with, uh, the regional manager Thursday at eleven o'clock.
Is that gonna be on site?
Uh, hopefully it'll be on site.
Okay, I'll try and join you for that, if that's all right.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. Good job. Anything else you have, sir?
No, sir, that was all. Thank you.
I appreciate you. Have a good evening.
Can I make another comment as the chairman?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, I just wanna thank Jeff and Robert for all the hard work they're doing for our convenience centers and our, uh, management of our waste. And those guys are really working hard, and they certainly need some more help if we can ever get around to furnishing Jeff some more help.
Good comments, and I agree.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, have a good evening, Jeff. Next is, uh, county mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, and thank you to Commissioner Creasy for the, the comments on solid waste. Uh, they do work very hard. And in fact, you've probably seen, other counties have seen their waste go up. Knox County has seen their waste go up, I think, uh, forty percent. They reported a couple of weeks ago, and Jeff said after, um, Memorial Day weekend, they had thirty-five refrigerators to, so everyone in Anderson County's buying new fridges, so just in that one weekend, thirty-five fridges to remove the free-on and break those refrigerators down for recycling. So, um, they do, they do do a lot of good work there. Uh, the first item. Uh, the first item is, uh, we added to the agenda the, uh, DOJ Office of Justice Grant. Um, this is for fifty-eight thousand and eight dollars. Um, I'm requesting a motion to accept the grant pending law director and finance and purchasing approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mead to accept the motion as presented pending law director's approval.
Yes.
Uh, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions on this motion? Seeing none, let's go to the board.
And Mr. Chairman, and pending law director and finance and purchasing department approval.
Commissioner Mead gave the thumbs up, and Commissioner Denenberg, I'm sure supports that as well.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the board. Motion passes fifteen, zero. Go ahead, Mayor.
Right, and then also, uh, um, Director Holbrook. Right, and then also, uh, um, Director Holbrook did mention that CT form that was distributed to you. We do need to somehow reflect in the minutes that you did receive that, if you don't mind adding that. Um, we, we were asked to just, for it to be noted in the minutes, and I don't know how it, how it can be noted, other than just do you do a motion to note that you received that form.
Yes, under the virtual rules, we need to have a, a vote on it. Uh, Brian, if you could clear the board. Rick Meredith, who's he? Commissioner Fritz, you make a motion to add the information requested for the, uh, report?
That's correct.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey?
Yes.
Better get this right. What's the name of that report, Mayor? I know it's right here in front of me.
It's, uh, just, you can just call it the CT form.
CT form. Is this the Tennessee Comptroller of Treasury form that? CT zero-two-five-three?
Yes, sir.
Got it. I got.
I got several of them. I don't, maybe I just got extra copies. Okay, uh, any discussion? Let's go to the board. Yes is to add into the minutes and accept that we have received it. Motion passes fifteen zero. Go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, next is reappointment of Dr. Drenka Malusinik Polchen as the Anderson County Medical Examiner.
I have a motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve, uh, the retention of Drenka Polchenik Polchnik. I probably butchered that last name there.
And just to let you know, I, I did verify with the district attorney general, and, um, he is, is happy with the services that Anderson County is receiving from, um, Drenka, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner McCamey. Seconded by Commissioner Scott.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no questions. Commissioner Jamison's ready to vote. He's ahead of me. Any questions, any discussion? Seeing none. Let's go to the board and vote. Yes is to approve, uh, Drenka as the Anderson County Medical Examiner reappointment. Commissioner Jamison?
I voted three times.
That's what it works here in Anderson County. Motion pass fifteen zero. Go ahead, Mayor.
The next is the appointment of Commissioner Tim Isbell to the Northeast Tennessee Railroad Authority.
I have a motion by Commissioner Denenberg to approve the appointment of Commissioner Isbell to the Northeast Tennessee Railroad Authority, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Uh, any discussion?
Yes, Mr.
I know we said, yes, Commissioner Creasy. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, I certainly approve that very much, uh, Mayor. Thank you for appointing Mr. Isbell. And, uh, after the vote, is it, could you give us a short rundown or an update on the Railroad Authority and where we stand on the possible trails and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go to the board and vote. Yes is to point. Motion passes fifteen zero. Thank you. Hey, Commissioner, uh, Mayor, give us a little feedback on that.
Sure. Uh, okay, so, um, where we are now is RJ Corman had filed a notice of abandonment with the Surface Transportation Board. Um, the STB has, uh, issued a decision to an allow, to allow an extension for the offer. Uh, the offer is, um, the Arkansas Oklahoma Railroad, and they have an interest in purchasing that line. And, um, so the STB, or Surface Transportation Board, allowed them until June twenty-third to come up with their offer of financial assistance. And, uh, this is where they are actually breaking down, um, the value they're going to present, their financial ability to purchase the line. All of that gets filed with the Surface Transportation Board. Uh, then, um, there would be probably some back and forth at that STB level. Um, and, um, i- if the STB approves, then the sale would go through. Uh, the Arkansas Oklahoma, they're known as the offers. Uh, they do have an interest in preserving the rail line, but that does not disallow the opportunity to also have trails along the rail line. If, um, their offer fails, and, um, that, that does not go through, and RJ Corman does successfully remove the lines, uh, then there would proceed the next opportunity, which would be just strictly trails only with no line. So, it's not an either or, but is if the purchase of the rail line fails. Um, so that's, hopefully that kind of wraps everything up in a little tight package. There's a lot more to it than that, but that's kind of the boiled cabbage version.
Thank you for that report. That was superb, Mayor, as usual. You are always prepared for our questions. Thank you very much. And I'm sure some of our listeners are also very anxious to hear what you had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
Thank you for asking, Commissioner Creasy, and thank you again, Mayor. Uh, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, the next, uh, item I placed on the agenda, uh, is Fourth of July fireworks. And, um, what I wanted to discuss with you is, um, we during the COVID-nineteen events, um, the cities and the, we have a mayors and manager call. No decisions or anything are made on those calls. Those are just information sharing opportunities where we all try to, uh, stay on the same page for messaging. We all share best practices. How are we handling, uh, the flow of traffic and safe distancing and these kind of topics? And, um, as we have been meeting, there was a lot of, um, stress, I guess you would say, over what to do with some of the regular community events we do. And one of those is the fireworks. The cities are really limited as far as space in order to safe distance. There's also a longstanding tradition in the cities of having festivals and bounce houses and food and, and all of the associated events surrounding a fireworks event. And so when, um, a, a lot of the cities, one by one, made a decision, and, and Oak Ridge was really struggling with what to do, they were, um, at the last minute, made the final decision, uh, not to host the fireworks event. Um, and so at that point in time, I thought, um, perhaps the county might be able to, um, I, I guess, take the ball, if you will, uh, for the cities. The cities always fund these fireworks shows every year, and then we all, even, uh, folks in the unincorporated areas of the county, um, we all go to our cities. Um, I shared with the managers and the mayors, um, that I was exploring the idea. I have talked with them about, uh, this idea. Uh, I've even talked with some of them about ideas, where to host it. Um, so for instance, one of our city managers suggested at the top of Wind Rock Mountain. Um, my original thought process was perhaps, uh, if you recall, I think it was back in two thousand and three, um, the county actually helped Oak Ridge out. They had raised the funds in Oak Ridge, um, but through a, an issue or a problem, they were unable to set them off in the city. So we, uh, offered to do those on the county side in Milton, at Milton Hill. Um, I've communicated with city manager Mark Watson. He believes since all of the cities are not doing a, a show, that it would be probably a log jam along Milton Lake Drive, and I tend to agree, if, if we do have those cancellation of events, um, that would be a log jam. So, um, just some initial groundwork I have looked into, um, because firework events have been canceled, um, the normal vendor for both City of Clinton and Oak Ridge, uh, the folks who do the La Follet Show, they do have an opening, uh, to be able to do a show. We would be looking at trying to find maybe a main arterial area in a county that would be easy for the cities to, uh, for those folks to get to. We would not want to do anything such as a festival or food. Uh, the messaging would be about safe distancing, stay in your car, perhaps watch from your home. But the response from the public has been overwhelmingly supportive. Um, and so I'm proposing that we host such a show, we, uh, partner with the cities, but I, I do not want to ask them for financial contribution. Um, they do have, um, um, plans for something in Labor Day where they could do a festival and perhaps, uh, use the, the credit that they already have. I think Oak Ridge has actually already paid for their fireworks, and they would like to look at doing something for Labor Day. Uh, City of Clinton is looking at the same thing. Uh, Rocky Top already has their funds set aside and would like to do something at Labor Day. So I am talking with these folks, uh, but I would like us to, to maybe just thi- this year, since the county never does this, uh, just this one year, fund this for the citizens of Anderson County. And again, in a way that would, uh, promote folks just watching from their car or in a way where they can stay separated.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey. Sir, state your motion.
Uh, the motion is to, uh, authorize the mayor to go ahead and secure a location and for the county to authorize up to twenty thousand dollars.
Up to twenty thousand dollars. Got it? As her second to that, Commissioner Isbell, he seconds that motion. I have several questions. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The week of May eleventh, there were thirty-three positive tests for the coronavirus. As of today's date, there are sixty. So approximately a month, there's close to, we've close to doubled our number. My concern is that it would be encouraging people, although you may say, you know, stay in your car, stay at your house, it's still encouraging people to meet in groups. Uh, the City of Oak Ridge are correct, Mayor, in saying that the City of Oak Ridge has canceled their fireworks at this time. The Anderson County Fair has canceled for this year. Um, the City of Oak Ridge has a lavender festival, um, that, that happens every summer. That's been canceled. The Secret City Festival has been canceled. Um, people can visit the public pool in the City of Oak Ridge, but it's by appointment only. You have to, you have to purchase a, a spot. Unfortunately, I believe that we would be encouraging people to meet, um, in public. And being that there are so many cities and counties that surround us that are not doing an event for Fourth of July, I don't think it's, um, appropriate to encourage others to come from outside areas, because obviously, it will be in the media, and they're gonna talk about Anderson County's doing it. So you're gonna have people that are coming from Rome County, Morgan County, et cetera. Um, and with that being said, I have to, um, vote against this.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very much supportive of it. I'm raising it. This has been one of the year twenty twenty. We were, we're not accustomed to any of the things that we used to do. And our Independence Day celebration has always been huge, especially in Rocktop area. If you've ever been there, I think the streets are packed. Uh, people look for them. And by being able to do this on top of a mountain or something like that, it will be spread out. People, you know, watch them all. But, you know, I, I think we have to try to get back, like Dr. Parrot's talking about, and how many of us feel, we gotta try to get back to normal as possible. And if we could include in on this, you know, the fireworks, some type of celebration for graduating thing, you know, just one block, uh, of the fireworks towards them. Thank you.
I can see it now. There's gonna be some hook 'em horns to fireworks. All I'm saying is there better be a dragon that shouts out some flames. Uh, good comments. Uh, Commissioner Smallridge, and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner? Thank you. Commissioner?
Yes, I, I appreciate the, the comments that have been made on behalf of the motion, and I appreciate the, the intent. Um, I think we've all been reading and hearing about the increase in the coronavirus in a number of states, including Tennessee. And I guess I, I have a concern about any activity that would tend to bring people in proximity, in close proximity. And no matter what we say, this is kind of a, this is an activity I think would tend to bring people together. So, um, I, I'm concerned about that with, with what's going on in the nation and Tennessee and, and in our own county. So I, at this point, I cannot support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge, for your comments. Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of this motion. Uh, I believe what, when in the most recent data I've seen and very accurate opinions by professionals are saying that most of the increases in cases we're seeing is because we're just doing a lot more testing. I would also point out that attendance to any, to this event would be voluntary. We're not gonna make anybody go. If somebody has, if somebody feels ill, we, we'd like to ask them not to come. If someone, uh, wants to wear a mask while they're there, that's, I think that's, you know, they can do whatever they want to do. This is, we're not gonna make anybody go. I think it's time to bring back our lives, and the people that want to attend should be allowed to attend, and I think we should support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Uh, Commissioner Val?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respect everyone thinking on this issue. There's a lot of things that's happened, but I've got people in our district, so many of those districts that have asked me about this, and they wanted me to vote for it. They wanted to have it. Uh, Commissioner Mead said they wanted to be able to go and see a fireworks celebration on the Fourth of July. So I'm gonna vote for the motion. I'm gonna vote the way that my constituents want me to vote. I'm not gonna get mad at anybody else. If you're voting the way your constituents want you to vote on this, that's fine. But I don't think if our constituents want us to support something like this, that we should vote for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Val. Good comments, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to add one thing. Um, what I did also talk with, um, Mr. Woods, who is the professional with, with the pyro company, uh, we did discuss larger shells. Um, and that way, people could see the fireworks. You know, they're not gonna have the same kind of impact, you know, as sitting close to each other, um, you know, in, in one of the cities. But using the larger si- shells, people can space further apart and be able to see them at greater distances. So we did discuss that in terms of safety. And, um, they, they, um, in La Follet, um, the cities and the, the county all joined together there, and they did have a successful show. Um, and it did lift the spirits of the community, community, from what I understand, there in, in Campbell County.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple more questions here. Commissioner Denenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, all I want to offer up is I have tried to be extremely diligent in wearing a mask during this whole episode. In my travels through the county in the past several months, I have been one of few that have been wearing a mask. With that said, I really would prefer that people did not, but I will also vote for the fireworks and those who want to attend. I certainly hope that they enjoy themselves, but I will not be. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Thank you, Commissioner Denberg. Commissioner Waddell?
Well, I think it's a great idea. I'd love to have some fireworks come the Fourth of July. But first, I would like to know where we're going to do this. Before I commit to a substantial amount of money, $20,000, I'd like to make sure that it's going to be a suitable place. It's going to be someplace where we can get our money's worth, for sure. I've tried to amend this several times and it kept going away, but I would also like to amend this to $12,000. I think $20,000 is just too much. If we need some more, maybe we can take up some donations or 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 do something, something that that aspect. But I think $20,000 is just too much. And I'd, I'd like to vote for it, so that's my, my amendment.
So you're making an amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a second to the amendment? What's that? We have a second to the amendment. Now we'll turn our discussion to the amendment. Can you, I guess we're going to have to clear the board, keep Isible McCamey as the original makers of the motion, but we're going to have to take a vote on the amendment. We have a motion and a second, and we had the motion for the amendment by Commissioner Waddell, and it was seconded by Commissioner Yeager.
And the amendment was to reduce the cost?
Yes, sir, from 20 to $12,000, from 20,000 to 12,000.
Thank you.
Any others? Oh, good question. Any other questions on the amendment? Commissioner Val?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, you're fine. No, absolutely.
I need to ask a mayor question that she may not yet have the answer to. I can't remember being on city council, how much they charge the city for the Fourth of July celebration fireworks they do there. It's anywhere from 20 to a 30 minute show of fireworks. Do we know how much of the difference that would be reducing the cost a month?
Um, the, so for instance, the City of Clinton, their show normally runs around 12,000. Oak Ridge does more in the $20,000 range. My understanding is essentially you're looking at $1,000 a minute. But one of the reasons we were looking at a little bit higher cost was using those bigger shells so that people could be further away and see, you know, not have to all come within close proximity. So that, that is why we were trying for the larger amount. Commissioner Val?
Thank you, Mayor. And given Commissioner Waddell's point, and I agree with him, it needs to be a show worth coming out and seeing. I'm just wondering now, seeing a $10,000 is going to get us where we need to be for that. So I'm going to have to vote no on this one in public.
Thank you, Commissioner Val. Go ahead.
Yeah, just with with all the cancellations, I would just think that the mayor could get with the fireworks, we'd probably get a good deal. We'd probably get a lot of fireworks for $12,000. So, I mean, I, I think she's very capable of doing it, so.
Oh, yeah. No, good, good comments. I, I agree with you. I feel like maybe there's a.
There's a negotiating hat.
Well, there's, obviously Oak Ridge is not having them, Clinton's not having them, Lake City's not having them. There's three sets of fireworks that were sold. I don't know how that contract was written, if they have to still pay for them or not, but those fireworks aren't being used. But maybe the mayor and her negotiations, which she's been doing, maybe a, a three year deal and, and, you know, who knows? But I'm sure she can work it. Commissioner Mead, sir?
Having a little experience with fireworks in the past, I can tell you that when you set up a fireworks display, there's a fixed cost just happen.
Yeah.
Because there's a certain number of people with safety requirements and all this stuff that have to happen, okay? And then there's the cost of the actual fireworks. So if you go from 20,000 to 12,000, you don't get 12,000. You now get less than half of the, of the presentation you were giving. So it's not, it's not linear. It's, there's a certain cost just that takes a certain number of people to be there to set it up for safety reasons. They have to have an area under control. And also the, even though the City of Oak Ridge will not be necessarily sponsoring them, I guarantee you that Oak Ridge Police and the Anderson County Sheriff's Department are going to have people around them because of the large bunch of people that are going to be there, so they're going to be active. So there's going to be other money that gets into being spent. But you just don't want to believe that you're going to get 12,000. You're going to get less than half the show that you would have had at 20,000, well less, maybe a third. And so we just have to be, we just have to keep that in mind because we want this to be something that people really want to want. And if you are here, they'll probably come to our restaurants, they're mostly open down, and buy gas and shop at Walmart or whatever.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner McCamey?
Yeah, as the maker of the original motion, I, I, I can't support the amendment. I, I just feel like that it would, it would make us look cheap. And the cities, you know, they've stepped up every year for, gosh, as long as I can remember. I've not missed one in the last 15 years. But I think 20,000 for one time, it's a one time thing. I'm sure the cities will be back into it next year. But I just feel like the county could take this on for one year, and I don't think 20,000 is, is an exorbitant amount.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. All right, we've had any other discussion on the amendment to reduce it from 20,000 to 12,000? We're getting ready to vote on the amendment only. If you support reducing to 12,000, you vote yes. If you'd like to keep it at 20, vote no. Let's go to the board. Just making sure now, yes is to reduce. Reduce. All right. Watch what I say. Motion fails. Five yes, 11 no's. Okay, we're back to the original motion. Can you put the original makers of the motion up again, Brian? Something else, Commissioners, we can do, good discussion, is Channel 95 could carry this for those that are worried about COVID. You know, maybe we can get Channel 95 to kind of carry it and folks can watch it from home, if they have Channel 95 or internet access or whatever. Okay, we're back to the original motion, which was to support the mayor's request of up to $20,000, find a suitable location. Commissioner Creasy, yes, sir? Commissioner Creasy, unmute yourself, sir. You're muted. You're still muted. Can't hear you. There you go.
And the folks getting close together and, and, and the increase in the spread we have. But it seems to me like the mayor has worked very hard and talked with the city managers and it, it sounds from her presentation that may, she may have the blessings of the cities in, in moving forward with this and, and taking our turn. The, what we haven't heard, and I agree with Mr. Waddell, and that when I first hit the request to speak button, that was going to be my question, is where can we have it that we could do it in a safer way than, than what Oak Ridge could do it or Cent, Clinton could do it? And now that's just been, you know, going through my mind, wondering where there is property and space where there could be spectators yet not to be crowded so close together. And I haven't come up with that yet. I, I know the mayor mentioned across, maybe, I think she was suggesting across the river from the marina, but thought that that wasn't a good idea because it would put a large crowd on, on the, on the Milton Hill Drive there and be very crowded. I, I think that's what she said, I'm not sure. But, but anyhow, I, I think I would like to kind of hold our vote until we can let her do the research and, and come back to us with where she's going to hold it and give us those particulars that she thinks it'll be safe and, and then we make our vote, our decision to support it or not support it. She's worked very hard apparently so far and, and I'm sure that she will do the same and find in a suitable location. So I'd like to kind of wait for my vote against, if I vote against it, or my vote for it, until she has another report for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. We, we obviously will have to make a decision tonight as this is the June meeting and the July meeting would be after the Fourth. So we'd probably have to make a decision now in some capacity, but good points and I appreciate your comments. Any other questions or comments on the original motion?
Just to clarify, we have to have two thirds, sir?
Two thirds? Are we below the $4 million?
We're below four and a half.
It rares its ugly head. That's why I don't like that minimum. But oh, well, doesn't matter what I like. Okay, no more. Oh, Commissioner Fritz? Yes, sir. Unmute. Can't hear you, Commissioner Fritz.
Oh, oh, just a second before I mute there. It also hasn't been to the Budget Committee, so that's our concern.
Said it has not been to the Budget Committee. Is that all you had? Commissioner Fritz, are you muted again?
No.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Mead?
I would say now, because of the urgency, we can't wait till next month for it to go to the Budget Committee. It would be after the Fourth. And so in circumstances where there's an urgency and there's a time constraints, the commission has full authority to take up anything they want.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Go ahead, Commissioner Fritz.
But it still requires, that still requires two thirds vote regardless.
Yep. Mayor, why couldn't we use some of those COVID funds for this, that grant?
I don't, I don't think they would allow that, but we are allowed. I will announce the governor and the legislature have not finalized those funds where we're going to be receiving over $1 million. Where we were going to have to do it as a grant application, the governor is now just opening that up and the legislature is opening that up to where it can be for lost revenue or capital. We no longer have to, the word I got last week is that they were opening that up and that was not, no longer going to be part of the process. I will also note that the county, even in January alone, we had a windfall in sales tax in just that one month of $760,000. We've also received a work comp refund. So there are funds and this is just an opportunity to help the cities out. They've carried, you know, they've carried the load and they'll go back to carrying the load. This is a one time opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so Mr. Partymaterian, what do we need for two thirds here? 11. Thank you, sir. Okay, no more discussion. I don't see any other questions. The motion is to approve up to $20,000, select a location to have a county event with the mayor heading it all up like she's been doing. Let's go to the board. Yes is for, no is against. Got to have a letter approval. Go ahead, Jay. Yeah, Jay, you bring up a good, good point. Do we have to, do we have a private act that prevents us from doing this?
No, if it's a patriotic display, that's waived, that is allowed under the private act. But I heard something from Commissioner Fritz that kind of disturbs me here, that it's not been in writing, presented to the Budget Committee. Is that correct? If that's the case, it needs three fourths vote. I'm certainly supportive of the mayor's recommendation, but that's a three fourths majority if it has not been to the Budget Committee, not two thirds.
What are we talking now, 13? 13.
Now, that is a county commission rule that can be waived by another vote of county commission, but as it stands as written, you will need 13 votes for this measure to pass. Partymaterian says 12, two thirds or, or three quarters. No, that's, that is three quarters, but when you divide it out, I believe you have to have 13, correct?
X will. Okay. X will. That's, yeah, before we go any further, anybody got any questions? Can you clear the board again before we go to the board? Okay, well, let's just hold tight then. Is there any questions? Did you have a question, Commissioner James? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, the attorney said that we, there's a way we could waive that three fourths. You know, how does, what's the way we do that?
You suspend the rules, sir. You can suspend the rules with a super majority vote.
Yeah, because I designated fund balance to me. Okay.
Yeah, I thought we always asked for a two thirds vote when it hadn't been to the Budget Committee.
You had, Ms. Murphy used to tell county commission all the time that it was a two thirds vote, but I believe the last time that we addressed this, I can pull it up real quick, it still says, wait, hang on just a second. Last time it was amended was November of 2018, and these are the county commission rules and procedure, and Rule Nine still says three fourths majority or 12 votes. Does anybody have this budget right now?
I think they're going to take it out and designate a fund balance.
That would still need the super majority of three fourths or 12 votes.
All right, any other questions? I think we debated long enough. Let's go to vote. Yes is to approve, no is to be against. B 12. Motion fails 11 to 5. Okay. What's next, Mayor?
That is all.
Thank you for your efforts. I appreciate you trying to make those for support.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, while the mayor is on the platform, could she bring us up, give us a, a quick report on the coronavirus? She's al, always done a good report and always looked forward to it. And while we're on TV, I'm sure the residents also looked at her report. And has she heard anything from the governor's office on suspending this or extending his role for allowing remote meetings or virtual meetings? That is an interest to me and I'm sure some other commissioners, and I'd like to hear what she's heard in regard to those two issues.
I did run down and expressed that some of our commissioners wanted to continue to meet virtually and I asked for any insight from the governor's office. The executive director of the Tennessee County Services Association let me know that his knowledge so far, the governor has a intention of extend, of extending the virtual meetings beyond June. Committees, the Senate has essentially closed all the committees and as of this morning, what I heard is they were about to pass the budget. So David Connor, the executive director, did not know. Executive Director, did not know if it was possible for the, the issues to still be addressed. The Tennessee Coalition for Open Government was willing to work on the legislation. So at this point, it does not look like it will happen, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. But all wins are that it will not happen. As far as COVID, the, we have been told all along, as we continue to test, we will continue to find more cases. I've been tracking the percentage of positives out of total testing. We've been saying below 1%. If you look back, when I first started tracking this, on April 4th, I believe it was, we were, we were testing positive at a rate of four, almost 5%. The Governor has put up new, a new data sheet. So now they are reporting positives plus probable positives. They're also breaking out the testing because of how the tests were being accounted for in terms of folks testing positive and maybe then being tested again. They've also started sharing, which is new, if you want to go on their Tennessee Department of Health website. They have started putting all of their master data online. And you can go break each county out, and Anderson is on there, and you can break us out day by day. And you can see even hospitalization, which had, had only been reported at the state level. You can now get that for Anderson County. Currently, our, our new hospitalizations are zero. Over the whole life of this virus, six folks in Anderson County have been hospitalized. I do keep in contact with Jeremy Biggs at Covenant Health. The goals set out by our health officials were to flatten the curve. I think if you look at Vanderbilt's predictions of 5,000 hospitalizations at this point in time, we have well beaten that in regards to flatten, flattening the curve. And I'll continue to keep an eye on it and reporting those numbers.
Thank you, Mayor. Good questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Mayor, since you've been watching these on the Tennessee.gov website, there's a column on there that says PCR positive tests. What is that PCR test or positive? It says for Anderson County, that confirmed and probable is 60. PCR positive tests, 75.
So the Tennessee Department of Health made changes that were effective on June the 12th. They were adding probable cases to the case counts and the breakdowns and reporting the total PCR lab tests. And you can go to the Department of Health website and they get into what all of that is. So a confirmed test via a PCR test, that's the name of the laboratory test, is someone who has tested positive for the virus that causes COVID-19 or the SARS. In a probable case, is someone who may have tested negative by that PCR test, or has tested positive by another type of test. That's whether it's antibody, or they may not have been tested at all, but they have had contact with a COVID-19 individual and they have other risk factors. So if you go to the Department of Health website, you can get all of that breakdown since they just came out with that on the, on the 12th. I'm not a, I'm not a pro at it.
Sure, I understand. Jay, what have you found out for us?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Did you ask me a question?
Yes, sir. What have you found out for us with regards to remote meetings?
We're waiting on the extension of the Governor's Order, Commissioner. Right now, we're authorized through the end of June. But I believe there is some discussion, and I think the Mayor just reiterated that among some counties to go ahead and extend that, allow us to meet electronically. And I believe, and I've heard, that we may hear something before the end of the month from the Governor's Office on this issue. We're not the only county that is looking at this issue and sees the problem with the Governor's Order expiring at the end of June. It looks like we all, or a lot of us, all counties would love to get back to maybe two or three more months of electronic meetings just to make sure, especially with the recent spike.
I mean, my concern is that, you know, I've watched some of these meetings on television or by remote, and there's no sanitizer even up on the Commissioners' desktop up there. You know, I'm, I'm watching people and y'all would be more than just amazed of how many times you touch your face, whether it's you're adjusting your glasses, somebody might be rubbing their beard or their chin, they're fluffing their hair. You know, that's, that's all part of this, you know, what you want to stay away from, what you want to refrain from. And I'm, I'm one of those that when I go to the grocery store or go to the post office, I put a mask on. I'm not concerned about myself, it's everybody else. You know, they, they, when this whole thing started, it was a constant reminder that you have to wash your hands, wash them for 20 seconds, you know, use, wash them for 20 seconds under hot water or warm water. You know, be aware of your surroundings. And there are a lot of people that just blow it off, you know, as if it's no big deal. And I'm just watching out for myself, you know, to stay safe. And I don't feel comfortable meeting in the courthouse, let alone in, you know, in a, in a big group. So I'd appreciate if you could keep us abreast, both you and the Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Commissioner Denberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Frank, in the breakdown that the Health Department has been doing, is there any data on where the people who are being tested or have been tested are from?
There is a, I haven't had a chance to play with the website. There's a new graphic that is now on there that breaks the positive cases down by zip code. And it's color coded, you know, one to six cases, or I, I can't remember the breakdown. And again, I haven't had time to figure out how to, to mess with that data. So I just saw that it was being posted and I went on and looked and couldn't figure out how to, because the county line doesn't match the zip code. So I haven't had a chance to really dig into Clinton versus Oak Ridge versus Norris. But it is on there now.
Well, isn't that something that we really should get a handle on to make sure that we're not missing people who, because of where they do live, are not really, have easy access to the actual test site because of transportation or whatever the issue may be. And that was why I was asking if there's any way of identifying the areas where people have come from to be tested and kind of get an idea population-wise as to areas that may be lacking in testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Denberg. Commissioner McCamey.
Yeah, I can't get away from the fireworks thing. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and allow the Mayor to secure a place and provide up to $18,000 for the fireworks on the 4th of July.
Well, we already had a vote on that and it failed.
Actually, it's a different motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, it is. And do you have just a minute and I'll try to help you through this, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Commissioner McCamey is right. He's making a different motion. But a couple of opportunities you have here, and again, I'm certainly supportive of the Mayor's efforts here. Our citizens want to live again and they don't, they're tired of governmental restrictions. But this is not a matter of the private act standing in the way. We'll talk about that later under the Operations Report, but it's our rules of procedure. But we do have the opportunity to suspend these rules, if you wanted to try that. And we do have the opportunity to make a new motion, as Commissioner McCamey has said. The suspension of the rules is not two thirds vote, it's three fourths. You can amend the rules by two thirds vote, but that's only, that'll only take effect at the next meeting. So the option there, if you wanted to suspend the rules, you'll need to have the three fourths supermajority there. But Commissioner McCamey has put a motion on the floor that is new. It's materially different. It brings it down to $18,000 appropriation. And you can vote that up or down, or choose to reconsider with somebody from the prevailing side, making a motion to reconsider, second voting on that. And then you can choose to attempt to suspend your rules tonight with three fourths majority. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can you restate your motion, Commissioner McCamey?
Motion is to allow the Mayor to secure a location and to provide up to $18,000 for a firework show on July 4th, 2020. And I, you know, I make that motion because I've had nobody, not one person say, don't do this. But I've had a ton of people to ask me to support it. It's been on Facebook. If you look, if you're on Facebook and you look at Facebook, it's got 100% support.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. That's your second too, Commissioner Mead?
Yes, it is.
Any other discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board. We need 12 still. Correct? 11 to 4, motion fails. Okay, Mayor, you got anything else?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your efforts. Moving on, any other questions for the Mayor? Go to Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. If anybody has any questions on Section A, the contract approval, I'd be glad to take those questions now. If not, we'll move on to two new lawsuits. Lisa Jones versus Anderson County, we just been, we haven't received a complaint on this, but we've been notified of a healthcare liability claim. I've looked at the documents that we have in our possession. I don't see any liability. But then again, we're limited as to what has actually occurred here in our knowledge. But it does, doesn't look like at this point, we have much liability exposure on this Jones case. Number two is the Marlin Diggs case versus Anderson County Sheriff's Deputy Thompson. That case was filed pro se. It's outside the statute of limitations. We should be able to get that dismissed post case. Section C is the promotional exam for the detention corporal. Those results have been sent to the sheriff. I'd like to draw your attention to a very important issue listed under Item D, and that's the Sheriff's Office Policy Review. And I think we all, I certainly applaud, and I think we all applaud, the sheriff for his quick response, certainly during these times of social unrest, that he's gone and he's reviewed and addressed his policies on use of force, internal investigations, employee discipline, audio, video recording. It's quite important and certainly a great accomplishment. The sheriff was inherited policies on these items. And he took it on his own to go back and review these policies and, and redraft them. But thanks to the sheriff for doing that. I think we all appreciate him. And thanks to Brad Pruitt, the young man that's been interning in my office for helping getting these together. Just a little note on 205 Main Street, you did approve the bid last week of Rusty Wallace, or last month of Rusty Wallace. We've been trying to get him here to sign a purchasing contract and get our earnest money. We've been unsuccessful. We've been communicating via email on this. I did request an update last Friday and the representative got back with me. And he said he would come by this week and sign the contract. So I'm hoping he does. At that point, we'll have earnest money and we'll feel a lot better about that deal. But we, I'll let you know just as soon as the gentleman comes by. We have the contract ready to go. And if he'll stop by, present purchasing with a check for the earnest money, we'll move forward with this and schedule a closing date. Item F is the Oak Ridge MOU update. If you recall, back in January, we passed a memorandum of understanding for the General Sessions Division II Court. We sent that to Oak Ridge at that point. In fact, we sent it via email that night. We did get a response back by letter. I sent that to you this morning. You should have an email from me. And basically, what the City of Oak Ridge is saying is they have an agreement. They're bound by that, even though most of us didn't realize it was, had been passed. But they will continue to contribute $30,000 a year for five years. That was passed in 2018. And we will, they said at that point, they'll revisit this whole issue and decide what they're going to do going forward. But as it stands right now, we have a commitment from them for $30,000 a year for five years. And after that agreement expires, they'll come back and revisit that. And you do have a letter from Ken Krasinski, City Attorney, and also signed by City Manager Mark Watson. Jay, one item that I have.
Any questions so far?
Yes, sir.
Jay, sorry, did I interrupt? There's a motion on the floor here by Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner McCamey, your motion?
Yes, the motion is to refer the MOU to the Operations Committee for further discussion.
I have a motion to refer the MOU to Operations for further discussion, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, that's what this is telling me is if the City of Oak Ridge considers $30,000 a year to meet the state law requirement that they provide the court building and offices to support that. I just think the courthouse and all the offices required to support things for the judges is worth more than $30,000 a year. And they are significantly underpaying what is required under the state law that allows us to have the court there.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Wabill.
I'd just like to point out that General Sessions II is not only used, is not just used by Oak Ridge. It's also used by Rocky Top. It's used by Oliver Springs. It's used by TWRA. It's used by several other agencies within the county. So it does serve a purpose, not just to Oak Ridge, but other agencies as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Wabill. Anyone else? Commissioner Yeager.
I would like to, just to say, well, this thing referred to a number of times, I've never seen it. Jay, will you be able to provide us with a copy of that?
Yes, sir. It's a private act. I've sent it out numerous times before, but I'll send it to you in just a few minutes. It's the private act that Anderson County and the City of Oak Ridge mutually went together several years ago and decided we would have a General Sessions Division II in Oak Ridge under certain terms. But I'll send that out to all Commissioners. And if you didn't, if you don't get a copy in the next hour, then let me know. But I'll send it back out to you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Yeah, Jay, one of my questions was going to be, you know, when you have a contract with someone saying you're going to pay X amount of dollars, or that you expect that much from them, you can't go in and say, well, guess what, two later, two years later, that's not enough, we want more. That contract would stand. I mean, that just makes sense. But one of the questions I have for you regarding 205 Main, how long do we wait? What is a considerable amount of time to wait for someone to come four blocks over? What is a considerable amount of time to wait for someone to come four blocks over to sign a piece of paper?
Commissioner Scott, let us, we'll come, we'll come, hold on, we'll come back to that, I want to stay on one item at a time. We are talking about, and Commissioner McCamey, was your motion a referral, or did you just make a motion to send it to operations? Because if it's a referral, I don't think we need. Go ahead.
It was a referral motion.
I apologize for jumping in, sorry.
It's all right, you're going to come, I'll come back to you, no problem. Go ahead, McCamey.
It was a referral motion, I refer it to the operations committee for further discussion.
So we really shouldn't be having debate on it, really, here in this format, because it's a referral motion to operations, and all these questions can be discussed there and addressed there. Commissioner Smallridge?
Yeah, I may have missed it, but, and I apologize if I have somewhere along the line, but have we been given a breakdown of that number that was used, or the amount of money that the county has put into the building, $700,000? And whether that was solely for the courtroom and related facilities, or did it also involve other parts of the building? I'd just like to see a good breakdown of that number.
Good question. I don't, I don't think we can.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a Bible on General Sessions II, and that'll be presented at the operations committee. Right now, we have a little over $2 million that we've rented space, we paid $800,000, you know, just for space that we rented that we should never have done, but we did. But I'll have all that available at the operations committee meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Creasy? Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Commissioner Creasy? You're muted, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, for recognizing and letting me speak. Yeah, and I would wish to thank Mr. Waddell. He took the words right out of my mouth about the courts in Oliver Springs and Rocky Top. That court facility is serving this county very, very well, and it has from the time we first voted on it 20-some years ago. It's been a very, a great asset, not just for Oak Ridge, but for all of Anderson County. It almost sounds as if McCamey is, or I shouldn't mention McCamey's name, it almost sounds as if one of the commissioners has a, something, I don't know how to, I don't know what words to use, but it, it certainly is determined to keep this going, and I just, I don't see it, I don't see where he's coming from. We've, we've got a good relationship with our cities, the cities all benefit from that court, it's been money well spent, we're getting a lot of use out of that building, and there's a lot of future use and benefits that we can gain from that facility. And, and I think the Oak Ridge has been there with us when we needed them to give us support on the improvements, they've always been right there and always willingly helped us. And I'm going to vote against the motion to refer it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. All right, we have a motion to refer this out of memorandum of understanding to the operations meeting. Let's go to the board.
Chairman, my, my voting thing, it went blank here. My voting pad, so.
Okay, say it out on you. You can give a verbal vote, but, go ahead, Commissioner Denenberg.
This is, I'll vote, I'll vote yes, for referring.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Go ahead, Commissioner Denenberg.
No, Commissioner Smallridge quite frankly answered my question, thank.
Nine yes, six noes, motion passes to refer to the operations. Okay, Commissioner Scott, coming back to you, go ahead, you got a question about 205 Main?
Yes, sir, and I apologize for that earlier, I didn't realize there was a motion. So Jay, what is a reasonable amount of time for us to set to the side, set aside that contract for the folks over at Rusty Wallace to come down the street and sign it?
There is nothing stated in the law, but what I'll do is if I have no additional contact, which I believe I will, I trust the gentleman, he made a promise to stop by this week and sign the contract and deliver the earnest money, but I'll report back to county commission next month with your options, and that's if we don't have any contact, and I'll, I'll give you several options that you can go forward with. But right now, let's just be hopeful that the gentleman stops by this week and signs the contract. In the future, I'd like to handle these real estate sales like this, as soon as the bid is announced, go ahead and do a purchase contract in purchasing, have that ready with a contingency that it has to be approved by county commission at the next county commission meeting in there. I think that's the way to do it, we've had a couple of examples here lately, especially with 205 Main Street, where we didn't get a chance to put a purchasing contract in place, we were waiting on county commission approval, but in the future, I'd like your permission to go ahead and have that purchasing contract ready, and I'll write in that purchasing contract that it's subject to county commission vote at the next county commission meeting. That way, we can collect earnest money and have a binding deal on the spot as soon as the bids are opened, but that's what I propose going forward.
Well, and I think that's, that's appropriate. How long ago was it that Rusty Wallace learned that they were the winning bid?
I believe it was the day after county commission, they were informed by Catherine.
In May?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, I'll keep you up there. Commissioner Denenberg?
Just very quickly, I will certainly be glad to offer my services to go to Rusty Wallace, get a signed contract, pick up a check, and bring it back to the law director.
I appreciate that, but the gentleman said he was coming by, and I'm going to take him on his word, and I'm sure he'll be, be by this week, and we'll take care of that, I'll let you know if he doesn't show up.
I'm sure he will, but I certainly was willing to make the offer.
I know you will, thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Okay, next item, Jay.
Yeah, just really brief here, but we have a new firearms carry law for county officials going into effect on July 1, and I'm going to yield to our firearms expert, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Mead, are you willing to do a brief overview of this law, so everyone will know?
Basically comes down to this, a number of years ago, they changed the courthouse law on weapons in the courthouse from a prohibition in the courtroom, okay, in rooms where proceedings are in progress, they changed the word in the law to "building." That resulted in creating huge gun free zones where people are basically defenseless in the courthouses during the day, in Anderson County, that's basically the first, and second floor was a big problem. It also made it a felony for almost anybody other than the police and the people that sign, have any kind of weapon. There were a number of department heads, there was a number of elected officials that carried routinely, covertly, and then it became a felony, so they stopped doing it. The, this evidently was a problem across, across the state, because they passed the bill, Senate bill, 2066, House bill 290, both these bills passed on a five-to-one margin, okay, they've been signed by, by the, in the House and the Senate, and passed to the governor last week, and I expect it to be signed any day, and this is what it does. Instead of having a section that says county commissioners with handgun carry permits can carry in the areas of courthouse outside of judicial proceedings, they've changed it to say instead that it's elected, elected officials of any county or municipality, so that means city council members, they're included in this, okay? If they're authorized to carry, carry handguns for the 1351 permit law, that's what's called the enhanced permit now, and they're not in a room where judicial proceedings are in progress, they're allowed to carry a weapon in courthouse during judicial proceeding. Keep in mind that when judicial proceedings are not in progress, anyone with a permit is allowed to deliver all of our county buildings. It also, in the second, in the second part, it adds another, another section where it includes county attorneys, in the case of Anderson County, the private act for our county law director says that he functions as the county attorney, so he would be included. It includes the county attorneys, and that same thing, so, so, so city and county or municipalities, so that would include the city council for all their friends, or elected officials, are considered, who that have handgun carry permits or a logikary in the courthouse as of July 1. Okay, now that has not been signed by the governor yet, but anything that has a five-to-one margin in the House and the Senate, going to a Republican governor is pretty likely to be done. Those people are trustworthy in the fact that they've been trained with permits, and they're not allowed in the courtrooms, because I personally, they, they almost passed law on commissioners to carry in the courtroom, and I, I, I went out, really complained and called a lot of people, got a change to say commissioners to carry in the courthouse don't need to be in courtrooms, and so I'm glad to see that they maintain that, it does not allow anything to work. Now, keep in mind, in Anderson County, this commission decided that judicial proceedings were in progress, we define that as from the moment the court opens in the morning until the judges say that they're done for the day, and also, we allow the judges at any time, if they decide they need to have judicial proceedings in any room, they declare that to sheriff's department, and those rules go back into effect. So this, this is going to make the courthouse safer, and it's not because armed people are going to be just vastic and against an attacker, it's going to be that attackers simply don't go to places where they know there's liable to be multiple people in the buildings, their dependents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead, for that update. Is that it, Jay?
Just one more thing, and I'll just yield to Commissioner Denenberg to make a very important announcement. Commissioner Denenberg, you want to announce this meeting?
Jay, I don't have it in front of me.
I've got it here, I'll, I'll do it. Yeah, thank you so much. Just an open invitation for all our citizens to call in to a very important meeting tomorrow, put on by the Citizens Group Act, they're against coal ash, be Tuesday, tomorrow morning at 10:30. Any citizen in Anderson County, or certainly in the Klaxton area that's concerned about coal ash, you can call this number, 605-313-4818, that's 605-313-4818, press in the access code 293969, and the pound symbol, that's 293969, and the pound symbol, and again, that starts at 10:30 in the morning. You don't have to talk, you can just listen to the discussion, and they'll have a period there that you can ask questions, but that's all I have tonight, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer those, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jay. See no questions, thank you. We'll move on now to the operations committee reports, operation committee report, Chairman Isbell, Chairman Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner McCamey made a motion to approve closing the courthouse, the general public and employees come indoor or take vacation days on election day, August 10 and November 3, 2020. Commissioner Creasy seconded the motion, motion passed for a call vote for the full commission for approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mead to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner Isbell, any questions? Commissioner Fritz? Unmuted.
Can, why we need the courthouse on election?
We missed what you said, Commissioner Fritz, go ahead.
I said, can you explain why we need to close the courthouse on election day? Of, near, in an office, we have never closed the courthouse, and all of a sudden, we've got to close the courthouse on election day, so I'm just curious what the reasoning is.
Good question. Yes, Commissioner, Chairman Isbell?
Actually, that was a request from Mark Stevens, our election commission chairman, and the reason why he said it's going to be an unusual amount of write-in votes this year because of COVID, and would like to have the extra space available to use, that it's going to take more, more area, and that was one of the big reasons that he wanted to do that.
Do you want to respond to that, Commissioner Fritz, before I go on to Commissioner Mead?
I was just trying to figure out what was the main reasoning was behind it, after, I mean, for the first time in history of me being in voting that this, that we've ever shut courthouse down, and I'm just curious what the reasoning was behind all of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, I think it needs to be clarified, this closing of the courthouse is not closing it all down, it's only closing it to the public during that time, all the rest of the county offices will be doing their other work and stuff they need to do. They, they always have, even the people that didn't interact with the public generally have time to have to catch up with other stuff. And the election commissioner also indicated there's concerns, it was a huge amount of, much larger than verbal amount of right, written ballots, absentee ballots and such, that, that keeping the security of all that voting system intact is just going to be much in hand, we're going to have to have many more rooms than they've used in the past, and they, and just having those extra people wandering the hallways represents a, a security issue to the election itself.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was going to ask pretty much along the same lines as Chuck was asking, I mean, we have a single entrance method at the courthouse now, and it's manned by the sheriff's department, so it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense as to why we would stop anybody from coming in when you've got a guard at the door to begin with. So I can't say that I'm in favor of shutting down the whole courthouse, you're going to have people that have, you know, perhaps need to see the doctor that day, or perhaps need to get something recorded at one of the offices, and I don't think it's right to shut them off. So I have to vote against it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Creasy?
Yes, I had a little trouble hearing, Tim, Commissioner Isbell, is he next to a mic, or is he speaking from the audience?
Yes, he's next to a mic, he can speak up, perhaps. It's up as far as it can go. He basically was saying that the, the motion was made due to the fact that it needed space for the potential of a majority of write-in ballots, and the election director there felt that it'd be better to have the offices closed, or the courthouse closed to the public, that's, I think, in summary, what he was saying.
Yeah, close, yeah, I remember the discussion, it was to be closed to the public to cut down on the number of people in the courthouse. I'm sure it'll be open to poll workers and, and people that would be monitoring the election process, but as far as the general public coming into the courthouse, that was an issue for the election commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner McCamey?
One thing, too, that the registrar asked us to consider was the fact that this was recommended by the Department of Homeland Security. was recommended by the Department of Homeland Security. And security was the main issue with the COVID nineteen and all that and, and the possibility of cyber interference. But it was a recommendation from the Department of Homeland Security.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Any other discussion? Commissioner Scott, did you have something else?
Uh, I just wanted to ask Jay Jaeger. Jay, have you received any correspondence from the state of Tennessee or Homeland Security saying that there's this threat that's hanging over our shoulders?
Uh, no, ma'am, I haven't. But Mr. Stevens has received something. I think it was sent out by the state election commission, if I remember the discussion correctly. But I believe Mr. Stevens has a document or an email or something to this effect.
Okay. Well, perhaps, you know, he can get that sent off to us maybe. Mr. Chairman, what would it take for us to put this off for thirty days to allow him to get us some documentation?
Well, we have a motion on the floor. So I think we'll, I don't know if we can defer it or refer it while, while we have a motion on the floor. Can we, Mr. Jay or Jaeger, can we? No one's listening to me.
Jay, can I?
And a second. If you've got a motion in a second on the floor.
We got a motion in a second.
And you had a discussion. You need to go ahead and vote this up.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions, Commissioner Scott. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions on this motion to shut down the courthouse to the public on these election days in August and November? Seeing no other discussion, let's go to the board and vote. Yes is to shut the courthouse down to the public. No is opposed.
Chairman, please reflect my vote as a yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Brian will note as such. Eleven yes, four noes. Motion passes.
Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to reaffirm to move the election storage from rooms fifteen to sixteen to the vault, room seventeen. Commissioner Creasy seconded the motion. Motion passed by roll call vote for the full commission for approval.
I have a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board. Yes is to move as directed. Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. You might be influencing our vote. Just kidding. We value your opinion. You know that. All of you. Okay. Motion passes fifteen zero.
Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to move the IT department currently occupying rooms twelve, thirteen and fourteen to the back of the planning and development department, rooms twenty four, twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven with additional space, stated by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed by roll call vote for the full commission for approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, let's go to the board.
Again, I vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. And I'll just state for the record, Commissioner Smallridge, the reason you're doing a verbal vote is your iPad unit has deleted in battery life.
Yeah.
Okay. You have Smallridge as a do not vote?
In terms of do that, it's being reported.
Okay. So it's being recorded as he states it. Okay, good. We're meeting the requirements we needed. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, sir.
Commissioner Creasy made a motion to approve the preferred single entrance option and proceed the next step of the project. Commissioner Jaeger seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously by roll call vote for the full commission for approval.
Have a vote?
Roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Jaeger, you support that motion and that single entrance is obviously to the courthouse. Correct? Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Fritz, go ahead.
It's not stated here, but it was, I was concerned about, again, tied to this was the improvements to one eighteen A. And brought concern with all that was done, that not burned, that said and done, nothing is be done to that small office inside the commission room. Cause some commissioners, including myself, uses extra office space next in our commission room for breakoff meetings, special phone calls and things of that nature. And we need that extra office in our commission room for that purpose. So when all is said and done, when all the improvements are said and done, we need to make sure that that extra office in our commission room is.
Good comments. Understand what you're saying. You're asking that the small commission office that's off to the side remain intact and not be impacted by this single entrance.
That's correct.
And, and I don't think, this is just, I think, Mr. Chairman, you can probably talk to it better. It's just to proceed to the next step. There's not been any definitive.
That's correct.
Okay. So, so there's no actual plans to date to approve. That, that'll come back again for us to, okay. Okay. Good comments, Commissioner Fritz. Appreciate it. Any other discussion, comments?
Mr. Chairman, that, that plan, Mr. Chairman, the plan is the vault would be impacted, but the office space would not be impacted.
I, I thought it was the vault, but would it impact room one eighteen in any way?
Well, one eighteen, one eighteen A is that meeting room. So it would be expanded by taking the vault. I think Commissioner Fritz expressed concern that we would not move what's in the vault into that office. So we'll make sure that, is that not correct, Commissioner Fritz? You just don't want us to impact that, your office space or that side office?
That's correct.
Yes. We will make sure that is not impacted.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Good conversation. Anything else? All right, let's go to the board. Yes is for the project to proceed for a single entrance into the courthouse.
I vote yes again.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Fifteen yes, zero noes. In all the years I've been sitting here, we've never had a unanimous vote for a single entrance. So thank you to everyone involved. And I know the judges would be happy. This is something they've been asking for, for a long time. So thank you all for your work, Mayor and Roger and whoever else is involved. Thank you all. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Operations Committee Report. All except for giving thanks to Commissioner Denenberg for making the great delicious cookies.
Those were wonderful. Yes. I snuck a couple.
We want this every month.
Commissioner Jamison says he would like this every month.
And we'd have motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Thank you, Chairman Isbell, for the report. Commissioner Denenberg, you are up next with the Intergovernmental Committee Report. Go ahead, Chairman Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm glad everyone enjoyed them. Um, the Intergovernmental Committee met on June eighth in room three twelve, and we were in person and electronically. Members present were myself, Tim Isbell, Shane Vowell, Bob Smallridge, and Mayor Terry Frank, Tracy Wondell, Denver Waddell, and Jay Jaeger were not present. Commissioner Isbell made a motion to direct our purchasing director to send out RFPs to qualified labs, excuse me, and facilities for testing of any required samples to be obtained from the bull run fossil facility. Commissioner Vowell seconded the motion. The motion passed by roll call to forward to full commission for approval. I so move.
I think we passed that earlier, but we can certainly pass it again. We did pass it earlier. Yeah?
Yes, we did.
So I think we're good. We don't have to.
All right, Commissioner Vowell, thank you. Commissioner Vowell made a motion to direct our law, excuse me, director to send a formal request to Jeffrey Lyash, president and CEO of TBA, to request permission for our chosen representatives to enter the bull run fossil facility for the purpose of obtaining required samples of soil, water, air, and coal ash at the times of our choosing. Commissioner Isbell seconded the motion. The motion passed by roll call to forward to full commission for approval. I so move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mead, seconded, what? Nope?
I mean, I, I, I wanted to make the motion, okay, over. But now she's saying she wants to make both. So I, I'm saying that I'm the motion that she can be seconded.
Okay.
I want to accept, Chairman.
Well, Brian would have to clear the board.
Or just leave it like it is.
Are you okay with that, Commissioner Denenberg, for Mead to be the maker?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's truthful.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on that item? To write to the President of the TBA, Jeff Lyash, a letter requesting these items. Commissioner Mead?
There's just no, there's just no doubt that we need to request their cooperation and ensure that we have the proper access. And then add our discretion that she discussed is really important. Because if, if the only time you can inspect is when they get ready for you to come, you don't get the same kind of results. Okay. And you can show up whenever you want to and go wherever you want to. And they're going to have some rules about where people can go over there. There could be some places where you have to have special hazardous material training or something to go there. We're got to make sure we comply with those things. But that's what this coordination is for.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Any other comments, discussion? Let's go to the board.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Motion passes sixteen zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That does conclude the report of the Intergovernmental Committee. And I thank everyone for their support.
Thank you, Chairman Denenberg. And your next meeting will be next month or do you?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Good reports. Next, old business. Any old business, Commissioners? Commissioner Isbell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't know whether to do this under old business or new business, but we already discussed it earlier. But I, I still feel very strongly about fireworks situation. And the cities, I'm sure, you know, there's no opposition there. And I would like to make a motion that we reduce that to twelve thousand and let the communities be able to, and municipalities be able to contribute to that. And to get the TV stations involved. Like I was saying, if anybody's ever watched the ones they had in Knoxville and they had it fire on the water, they had music to go with it and they talked about it. And, and really going back to commemorate our scene because they have all sound.
Yeah.
So if we can incorporate that in, let the mayor work on that. Because like you said, you know, they can be the colors, the orange, the orange for Clinton, the, the, do the Wildcats, do the Mavericks. And that's just our way of giving these people, make one from home. I'd like to make a motion for twelve thousand dollars.
We have a motion for fireworks.
He needs to hit the button tight and second.
You have a second. Chairman Mead? Any discussion? Okay. No discussion? Let's go to the board. Going to take two thirds again. Three, or three fourths. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you. Chairman Anderson.
I vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Twelve yes, three noes. Wait a minute. He's a no. So it's four noes. But it still passes because it's twelve. All right. So we have a motion passed for fireworks up to twelve thousand and donations to be made by all those that can make them. And I'm hopeful that the mayor is able to get at least seventy five thousand dollars in donations for one massive fireworks presentation. And I hope that all of those that didn't have them will just, just, just make those donations. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, no more old business. Any new business? Here are no new businesses. Seeing no further business before this body, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.